Welcome to Portraits This Week. I'm Gary Gump. And today our guests are Keith Hamilton, our Town Council President, and Jim Sevigny, our Town Council Vice President. This morning, just to kind of give us a perspective on the year, what we want to try to talk about is what's ahead for Portsmouth in the new year? We ended up at the end of the year with kind of a list of activities that were yet to be done, and they've been produced, I'm not sure if we can see this, but there's a, the new Portsmouth Annual Report is available. It's available on our Portsmouth website. Town website is a PDF file, and I think there are a few copies, one at the library and a couple at Town Hall. And in the annual report, as a reminder of some of the things we're looking forward to getting done this year, on the last inside cover, the last page, is a series of future planned initiatives for 2015. And part of what we'd like to talk about today are what some of those initiatives are, how important they are, what we need to do to get them done. And then, independent of that, or I guess actually, kind of concurrent with that, we're going to be providing, I think at the next Town Council meeting, a list of activities we'd like to see our state legislators get involved in. And I think there are about 12 items that you put together and you sent me a copy of that. And I've got that in our little packet here. So what I'd like to do is maybe kind of bounce back and forth between the two and get some sense from the both of you about how important some of these issues are, what the circumstances are going to be to make some of these things happen, and/or what else the town needs to do to get some of those done. And it's, I guess this is what, maybe the second or third, second Town Council meeting of the year coming up?
Correct.
Right. So we've got a whole list of initiatives here that are for the town, and if we can maybe talk about them a little bit, I presume they're put together in priority, but perhaps they're not. But probably the top three that look like on the list are contracts for the police department, the notice of violation, and the DEM, and get the wind turbine change out underway. So maybe you guys could, I don't know which one of you would like to talk about those, but in terms of where we are on those, the progress that's being made towards getting those things done. I mean, I know the administrator, our town administrator is daily responsible for these things, but kind of from the policy and the overall town direction perspective, that's what you guys are involved in. So maybe you care to comment about that?
Sure. Well, first, thanks for having us in today.
You're welcome.
In terms of a priority list, I'm not sure that this was necessarily set into a priority as, you know, top to bottom. Labor piece is always good for any contract that we have with our unions. You know, we want to make sure we have our morale up. Having an unsettled labor contract can lead to unhappy police officers, firefighters, DPW workers. So that is a priority of ours. It's still within the realm of the town administrator, and he's been working on that and negotiating with the union at this point in time. And that's about all I'll say on that. As far as DEM goes and our wastewater negotiations, we have set up a new draft plan for them to review, a draft ordinance for them to review. Once they are finished with their comments, we will come down and have an open meeting with the people of Portsmouth to review the ordinance and the plan. And hopefully by sometime in the spring, we'll have peace with the DEM in terms of the notice of violation, and the people of Portsmouth Park and Island Park can move on.
Great.
And the turbine, I believe he's still, the person that we have negotiated with is still in the process of purchasing the turbines that he is bringing in.
Because he, or Portsmouth's particular piece of that was one out of 10 or something. He's in the process--
I think it's number 12, I believe.
A larger, a larger part of that, right, yeah.
So he was able to utilize the Portsmouth purchase and get a better favorable rate for himself on it.
Okay. Jimmy, have any comments on any of this?
Well, you know, some of this stuff was split, you know, between calendar year and fiscal year.
Sure.
I think we're well along with DEM, and I say that hopefully because, as Keith points out, they have to come back with their comments on our plan and on our ordinance, which was redrafted and changed in accordance with the memorandum of agreement that we both entered into, DEM and the town. So that should go okay. Remains to be seen with the wind turbine. We had to do that quite quickly, and that was so the developer could take advantage of a larger, more economic ordering quantity. So we'll see. Sometime, he still says that sometime this calendar year, we'll see construction begin, and that will begin with dismantling the existing turbine.
All right. Well, we had company over the weekend, and someone was asking me the question about, you know, what's going on. And I said that I thought, from what I had gleaned, that probably sometime in the late summer, early fall, there might, should be some activity going on around there, you know?
He has contract incentives to get the old turbine down sooner rather than later. So I would think he's not going to hold up on, you know, getting that bonus, so to speak. And his goal is to take it all the way down, and I believe to tear up the foundation and start all, start fresh. So hopefully we'll have it down, and then we'll be able to move forward with it.
One of the other things that's on here that I think is growing more visible as we move into the year is to continue to move forward with relations building, consolidation of efforts between schools and municipal departments. And I think, in my mind, when I read that, I immediately think about, well, kind of on a larger basis, what about consolidation with, you know, here on Equine Island, you know, some of the areas? We've talked about all these in the past a little bit, but generally speaking, it seems like there's a momentum here towards consolidation in all or any form we can find it, in terms of helping to reduce expenses.
Oh, sure.
Is there anything going on there that you guys could share? I mean, in the last two or three newspaper editions that have come out, there's talk about consolidating like 9/11 services, and there's talk of consolidating other things. Is that a bandwagon that we're probably going to join, and if we are, can you talk about that a little bit, maybe?
My firm belief is that if we're going to talk with Newport, Middletown, Tiverton, and Bristol about consolidating services between towns, I think we first need to get our own house in order. And looking at the relationship that has been built up over the years between the school department and the town department, and trying to bring those departments together to not necessarily save money right off the bat, but maybe find some efficiencies in order to look at services that we're doing on the town side and the school side that might be able to be joined together. My easiest one off of the bat is, you know, IT services. School department has a IT staff of six or seven people that handle their IT. We have an outsourced services that we're spending money on.
An obvious low-hanging piece of fruit there, right?
Yes. And it's just getting those, we have directed the town administrator and the school department has done the same, the school committee has done the same to direct the superintendent to just have informal discussions. They've met two or three times over the past two weeks, and things are going well. Another department to look at in doing consolidation would be buildings and grounds. Again, not necessarily to see about people losing positions or jobs, but to say--
Well, that's an attrition issue, isn't that usually? The way that works is, you know, if you have three or four people with the same titles, you can find other things for each of them to do.
It can be.
There are ways to work that out, right?
There's all sorts of physical things that happen to an organization when it becomes co-located, for one thing, when functions are grouped functionally. And, you know, then attrition, instead of becoming an issue, becomes an opportunity.
Yeah, means, right.
So, I mean, nobody wants to rock the canoe really heavily, but we have to, we have to build in future advantage where we can, and all this consolidation stuff leads to that eventually.
I mean, there are areas where, you know, Dave Keogh and Brian Woodhead do a great job in maintaining our infrastructure, and we've noticed it around town. People are seeing the roads being paved again. Our staff at DPW does a lot of the legwork in order to get that, those projects done, including rebuilding storm drains and fixing the berms after the projects are done. These buildings and grounds department at the schools does a great job of maintaining the schools and the buildings. So if we bring those two together, maybe--
Some complementary areas.
There's complementary services there, exactly. So maybe it doesn't save it. Maybe in the long run, we could look at, instead of outsourcing for electrical and plumbing needs, we have a licensed electrician and a licensed plumber in-house to do the small projects around schools and town buildings.
Well, I expect in over the course of the year here, in the next couple of years, we'll see a lot more emphasis on that as it goes on. I mean, it's certainly, I think, the obvious thing to be asking, I mean, almost everything that goes on, you could say, okay, are there any advantages to doing this jointly, or together, or through some other activity? Another area that's here, that's on this, is kind of at 60,000-foot level, I think, at least, or 30,000-foot level, maybe is closer to reality, is to finish and update our comprehensive community plan. And it's kind of a broad gauge set of directions about where we're headed. But one of the topics, almost every time we discuss it, is the need for more revenues in our town, and that's often linked to economic development. Economic development is somewhat stimulated or controlled by the comprehensive community How does council, how do you guys get input, or how do you interrelate with the development of the comprehensive community plan? I mean, I know that the planning department, yeah, Gary Crosby's department is in the process of evolving this, but how does council provide either guidance or gain information about how that's evolving and what progress is being made in terms of getting it together? Just as a couple kind of broad examples, our community has an agricultural committee, and we have some farms here and vineyards, and a lot of other lovely things that make it the town that it is. But we also have a kind of a growing residential population base, so there's a little bit of a potential for, I don't want to say conflict, but priorities, different priorities. And all of that has to be melded together. So in the comprehensive plan, how does council provide wisdom to the development of the community plan? Do you meet with Gary? Does, I mean, or do you--
It's a little bit of everything.
Yeah.
Gary is in the process of almost starting from scratch and taking some of the priorities that were in the old comprehensive plan that don't really pertain to life today, and scrapping those and pulling them out. He also has reached out to the council. He reaches out to each of the committees in town, so let's say the agricultural committee, and says, okay, what are your priorities, and what do you think, you know, the future of Portsmouth should look like in this comprehensive plan? My main goal for the comprehensive plan is to make sure that we have a better aligned zoning and plan and setbacks, so that we don't have people who purchase a residential house that may be up against a light industrial, commercial area. We've done a poor job in the history of Portsmouth with a lot of spot zoning. And if you drive up and down East Main, West Main Road, you see a house, and then you see a, you know, a commercial building. We need to provide those setbacks so that people can purchase a house and live in peace without the fear of the next thing you know, they're going to have a garage or something in their backyard. So that's one of my main priorities that I set forth to Gary. I know the rest of the council has reached back out to Gary and said, you know, these are things that I think, or I've talked to people in Portsmouth that are their priorities in town. We're mandated to have it done by the end of next year. The plan would be that Gary is hopefully going to have it all, a draft plan done sometime in the July, August timeframe, and then we'll have public hearings and public input on that, and then we'll have sometime this year, this time next year, a completed plan.
Yeah. I mean, this is a policymaking process as well, and certainly one of the policies, as Keith is pointing out, is to make the zoning consistent, you know? And if you're a business looking to do business somewhere in Portsmouth, I mean, the obvious places are along the East Main, West Main corridors, you know? So we need to make sure that we are supporting and furthering that, because if you do make a mistake, and we have, these become generational issues. Because once you've told somebody they can do something, you can't go back and change your mind.
Can't put the genie back in the bottle.
So all of that is being looked at, other policy, things are related to what farmers can and cannot do with their land. And Gary has reached out to all of us. I've already met with him and given him my insights, my goals and objectives from a new comprehensive plan. I think a lot of it will be, a lot of the comprehensive plan is good. It's very good. And I think it covers a broad swath of community concerns and activities, and things that you can do and whatnot. I think the zoning board and the planning board have done a great job of taking all of the spot issues and trying to do the best they can for the person who wants to do something in town, be it residential or commercial, and also try to be true and compliant with the larger community desire, you know, communicated through that plan.
Well, I appreciate you taking a couple minutes to talk about that. I mean, I'm, from some of my past volunteer activities, I'm a little bit familiar with some of the roles Gary has down there, and it's just, it wasn't obvious to me how our leadership is inputting to this whole process. So thanks for sharing that. We've talked quite a bit here, I'm sure we could talk even more about some of the activities that the town has for initiatives for this year and for the next couple of years. Some of these are predicated, I think, a little bit on some legislative actions. And one of the other things we've done is to create a kind of a list for our legislators, a wish list, if you want to call it that. Now, we have access to the 12 points that came from our council. I don't know, perhaps you guys can talk about what the school committee might be looking for, but that's, they're invited to also provide information on it.
Good.
And these items that we're looking at here this morning are a part of what will be discussed at the next Town Council meeting.
Yes. Come Monday night, our state legislator will be to be there to hear our wish list, to kind of discuss how we're going to go about, or they're going to go about, trying to help us accomplish some of these things. I didn't want to put a laundry list out there. 12 items seem to be a good, safe number for them, that they may be able to grab onto, hopefully four, five, six, or even all 12, to help us maintain the growth in town of Portsmouth, maybe cut through and allow us to better utilize some of the funds that we do have available. The goal here is to try and make Portsmouth as affordable as possible for all of our residents. And as number one states, a permanent block on the Seconic River Bridge tolls would be my first thing. If they can somehow work with DOT and the Federal Highway Administration to permanently block tolls on that and the Mount Hope Bridge, I think we'd have a lot better opportunity to grow here in Portsmouth.
And that could be as broad as working at the state level to consolidate the Rhode Island Bridge and Turnpike Authority back into the Rhode Island Department of Transportation.
Isn't that interesting that the smallest state in the union needs to have two departments of transportation?
Well, we have a lot of travel than we do here in town. I mean, let's take care of all this stuff. Anyway, we have a lot of unique things here in Rhode Island, you know? They're a funny place. But I certainly agree with that, and I think one of the steps that we'll all want to see is when they take down that gantry out there. And they did talk about the fact that someone had the Rhode Island Bridge and Turnpike Authority head on, and he was talking about the fact they've got a sales list, kind of a Craigslist affair, where they've got their, that gantry up there for potential sale.
Doesn't mean it can't come back.
Well, that's true.
So a permanent injunction on them would be great.
Well, right. But if we just get that down, I think that visual goes away.
True. And we still have our legal recourse. I mean, that legal action is still intact.
And it's ongoing and open?
Yes. Yes, it is.
The second item that was on this little laundry list here, which all of this, I think, was made available in the press here recently, so it's not hard to get the information, but to change the law at the state level that would allow the transfer of funds from the school department back to the town from whence it came, that seems to me like that should be something that appeals to all 39 communities in our state. So it would seem like that would be one that might have legs. I mean, I know the, I know there are a lot of reasons for how it got to where it was, and I don't personally know, you know, what all has been done to mitigate that, but it seems like that, that would be one that may work. I mean, we don't have anything pending in our budgets or anything on being able to get it back this year, but certainly over the next several years, if we can benefit as a community, the whole community, from opportunities to save money or money not spent, I think, you know, the example somebody gave was when a special needs student didn't show up, and there was some significant amount of money. At the moment, that's kind of frozen in place, you know? It seems like that may work. Have you had any more feedback on that particular, on this particular kind of legislation, any kind of general comments that it may work, in fact?
Not yet. They haven't seen it. The biggest issue for it, and you touched on two things, one, saving money in the long term, and also being able to utilize the funds that our taxpayers put forth, which is essentially what the surpluses is on either the school department or the town side. The issue we face, you know, in the past 12 months, we've been, had our bond rated up to AAA. When the surplus sits in the school department's accounts, it does not count towards our fund balance. And a lot of the fund balance helps predicate the ratings that we get for our bonds. So being able to return that money and sit in the town side helps us, which in the long run allows us to go out and borrow money more inexpensively, which saves us money in the long term. We did, you know, I think part of the reason here is there was a lot in the past across the state of threats and demands made back and forth between school departments and the town side and the taxing authorities. And we're in a place now in Rhode Island that we can't afford to be working against each other. We need to be working together for the betterment of each community. So I think this, like you said, would help out all 39 communities.
Yeah. I mean, again, I have a little bit of an idea of how, you know, the process works at the state level in terms of getting bills introduced or anything. So maybe on Monday, we'll hear from our legislative community if someone has already sponsored a bill to do this. I mean, there's a, you know, broad overall reform of all kinds of things that are talked about in our state, and hopefully this would be addressed in the context of that, but in a more realistic way, you know, it's kind of what you go fight for is what you get, you know, the squeaky wheel.
Well, there's a budgeting ideal here as well. You know, we go through a protracted process, you know, with the public and their input to allocate money to activities. When those activities somehow either aren't completed, or don't need to be completed, or they come in less expensive than planned, you know, now you have a surplus, okay? But that money was earmarked to do something. And if that has changed, then I think it's incumbent upon all of the elected officials to have a process where you can go back and explain what you would like to do with the surplus monies before just making a decision in the normal course of operations to do something different with money that has now been reprogrammed without the budgeting process. So I don't really, I don't really like that. So putting it in the town's surplus, the unfunded, or the fund balance, well, there's policy on that. And while we have made, you know, major strides to get compliant with that policy, we're on the low end of it. You know, the high end of it is 16% of your operating--
I was just going to say 16%, I thought was--
Correct. So, and you can kill several birds with one stone, but certainly what's important here is that you need to be able to stand up and tell the people who are footing the bills that you're spending the money on what we told you, what we asked you to support, not something different because the plan changed. That's it.
And in terms of whether or not there's any talk about it at a statehouse level, I would say probably not. This really only came to a head a couple of years ago when the school department agreed to return a million dollars of surplus and put it into the town's fund balance. And once that was completed, they were told no.
Oh, you can't do it.
Yeah.
We had to go ask for forgiveness, right?
Right.
It was never quite clear to me, anyway, on how all that blew back on us, because, I mean, it's sensible.
Yeah. Well, it is. I mean, you think about, we're still in a process of losing two, what, $200,000 a year because of the state reallocation of education funds. So it seemed like this would be almost a no-brainer in terms of moving, consolidating and/or transparent activities between the two.
And it's win-win, Gary, because the deal at the time was, you know, for the school department to give us a million dollars from their surplus to put into the town surplus, which counted with the bond rating agencies--
Moving us towards the AAA.
--assessments of us, okay? And the other part of that deal was, look, if you run into problems, that money is there. We're not going to go off and spend that money, and if something happens and the school department finds itself short somehow, okay? No one's forgetting that, you know, you put that money in the town surplus, and it's there if needed.
I mean, and actually, that's what it's for. It's for the whole town, and the school department is a big part of our town, but that's really what--
It's the rainy day fund.
Yeah, absolutely.
If something catastrophic happens.
Yeah.
We're not saying that, you know, the school department should have some sort of a surplus.
Sure.
Back to your example, a new special education child comes in, and it costs, you know, it could run up to $200,000. They have that money in a surplus for those one-time affairs, you know? Two weeks ago, a pipe burst in the gym, you know? Have money for things like that. If, God forbid, there's a lot of snow tomorrow and part of a roof comes in, they have that money. And it's still, we're not, you know, the town council is never going to fight with the school department to fix a building to educate our kids. At least, I hope it never comes to that, it won't, when I'm there.
Yeah. Well, that's great. Well, and it shouldn't. I mean, we're, you know, I mean, we're a small enough town, right?
There are protections under the law. If the school department comes up short, and there's going to be a deficit, we have to report that, and in the town, all of us have to come up with a plan to fix that deficit.
Make it whole, right. So we've talked a little bit about some of the things we're going to ask the legislators to help us get done, and why it will benefit us. Do you expect to hear anything back from, have you had any input yet about what's going on this year at the state level that will benefit our town, you know?
I think that's part of the meeting on Monday night. It's just an overall discussion. Here's our wish list. What else do you guys have in the hopper that can help us and move the ball forward for Portsmouth?
Yeah. Apparently not a great start so far, because with Ripek's report they just released--
Yeah.
The state's in deficit, or--
Yeah. A lot more than we thought it would, right? Yeah, to start with, yeah.
So we'll see. There's that context out there as well.
Yep.
Well, we've touched on a couple key items here, which are looking forward for the year, and we kind of walked into that through the back end of the, our annual report here, and this is the town's second annual report we've come out with. And the guy that created this was our current town administrator, or suggested it and kind of drove it, John Clemm. And I think our town has made quite a bit of progress under his term here, and he's leaving.
Yeah.
Can we talk a little bit about where we are in that process in terms of a new town administrator, maybe? We've got about a minute and a half, so--
Short and sweet. Last council meeting, the council voted to hire the services of MRI Recruiting Center out of, who found John Clemm. They're out in New Hampshire. Monday night, they will review the contract and vote on the contract for them, and also view and look at the ad. And once that is done, I will be working with MRI in order to get the ad placed, and then anywhere from 90 to 120 days, we'll have a new administrator. So sometime around that March, May 1st timeframe.
And I think Mr. Clemm has indicated his willingness to stay on until we get a new guy on board, right?
We have a contract with Mr. Clemm through July 1st, or June 30th. There's a 30-day out on either side, so if the town were to find somebody a little bit quicker, and that person was really gung-ho, then we could, you know, relieve Mr. Clemm if needed to, or if he finds another opportunity that he feels that he would like to venture out on.
Well, I, for one, I'm delighted that, you know, we're using the same recruiting outfit, and a lot of you that made the decision that brought Mr. Clemm on board are still here, so I wish you the very best of luck in doing that. And for those of us that volunteer around town, you can just feel a sense that there's more pride in our town, there's more things going on, you know, it's great. And I see we're running out of time, so thank you for coming on. We'd like to have you guys back again, maybe in six months or a year from now, and thanks for being on Portraits This Week.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.